Stood there and I put things in, out.
Need to order. Okay. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aaron's is absent prior notice. Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Christensen is absent. Mr. Currie?
Yes.
Mr. Gobow?
Here.
Ms. Lotner is absent. Mr. Noonan?
Here.
Mr. Popa?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Here.
And Mr. Walter.
Is there any public comment?
I'll offer one quick brief comment. I know Veronica is interested in submitting two percent application application for this first cycle. So if any of the other two groups are interested in potentially submitting one for consideration, it should come to this body for an April meeting.
Before the April meeting?
For the April.
For the April meeting.
Because our board will review them in May.
Okay, are there any agenda additions or deletions? Steve will talk under Miles Kimberly report. I don't know if he needs a line item, but just so we all know. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, thanks. I thought it was on there, sorry.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to action items. Number one, approval of the financials. Sure. Right here with us.
We lost Scott.
Where is Scott? That's what I thought. He told me he was going by, didn't he?
Oh, that's right. Shoot.
Not much thus far.
No. If I'd make one comment, just a statement, I think it's a small amount of money that we get from the capital for capital improvements for all the work that the three parks want to do.
You mean capital outlay?
Yeah, capital outlay. And I think that should be looked at.
Ever since I've been on this board, we've asked for more money every year.
Thank you. I appreciate your asking, especially the $190,000.
That didn't get approved?
No.
Did not get approved.
Just had a long conversation about that the other day with somebody. Okay, are there any questions about the financials? I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Popa? Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Financials are approved. Okay, moving on to the capital improvement program review.
I added this due to the documentation.
Okay.
You just buy through it.
Yeah. Essentially went through the current CIP and pulled out all the projects that are listed for Parks and Recreation Mission from the CIP and laid them out showing the cash flow years for each project. Right now, we have a $55,000 budget for capital improvements in 2023 and listed our $515,000 worth of projects for 2023. Obviously, that's a mismatch to my mind. So we are having, we have to submit a new CIP to Trudy sometime during March, I believe this letter says. So we probably want to look at what's in here for the current CIP. Larger projects that have multiple items in there, like expand the tennis courts at Veronica, no, not Veronica, Miles Kimberly, and then also relocate the ball fields. Then there's like five or six things all together in one item. I would break them up into individual items unless doing them where a group of projects have to be done at the same time, in which case you would keep them together. But I would recommend the committees break up those larger projects into smaller projects, which allows for prioritization to happen at a smaller level and cash flow the things realistically out into the future. I don't know what projects have access to the $55,000 that's budgeted for 2022 or for 2023. So we'll need to decide which projects get some portion of that $55,000. So I mean, I worked this, this is the way I like to look at budgets and information. So I worked this up for myself, but thought it might be useful to the committee.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You did this?
Yeah.
Very good.
Do we have a list of all the projects that we turned in with the budget? The cap, for the capital outlay? When I do the budget, we have to list all the items? I don't have a.
Good to see you. The page from the minutes that detailed what was presented to the board.
Yes.
I have to check to see if the Park Office prepared the minutes for the budget work session when we discussed it and potentially approved.
Okay.
I have a question about the cleanup at Miles Kimberly a year ago, whatever it was, a year or two ago. Did we do a CIP on that or we did not? I don't think.
That's kind of an emergency situation.
Yeah.
There were liability issues associated with people trying to get into the brush to get their discs.
Sure, no.
They could have been injured.
And Scott was in the hospital and all that. We got a lot of money for that and we didn't do a CIP. So the moral of the story might be, you know, just speak up for what you want and what you need and maybe things will get done without a CIP. I'm surprised why we didn't do a CIP on that. I just noticed that Charlie filled this out nicely and that's missing because we didn't have one.
If it's an emergency situation, they can buy against it.
I see.
Are there any questions for Charlie? Or Charlie, do you have any other questions for us?
No, I mean, we need to work on this probably before the next meeting. Get each committee to put their new CIP for the next five years together.
Right.
And then we can bring them together and review it. I was surprised when I looked at the CIP, there were no projects in the future for all settlers. It looks like, based on what we talked about for having to do it at all settlers with the gazebo, is that probably should be on the CIP. I think your idea of breaking things up when it's a multiple thing, that's a good idea, it'll lower the cost somewhat. But still, the cost of any project in the park is far going to exceed the $55,000 that we get. Oh, man, you know, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, today I can't look at this list and say, well, this project should be going against that $55,000. This is $300,000 on the list.
Sure. I appreciate that, I appreciate you doing that.
Call me remote and I'll let you know.
You'll let me know what it is? Okay. You're making us look like paint robbers.
What I can do is I can incorporate that into any future committee together and so we can also review the process.
It'll be up to the committees to schedule their meetings before, try to before next.
Before the next one to get their approvals of their own CIP.
Charlie, you mentioned the March deadline, what?
Well, Trudy's letter says something about submitting the form that she's got. There was an email that we got about the CIP and I think it's got a March date in it, that she's looking for the data back.
No.
I don't have that one in front of me.
It does at all. The deadline tends to be somewhat extreme. It's not all departments that are going to turn something down. So if you know you're going to be revising more parks, CIP stuff, just give her a heads up and say, hey, we're discussing this. It may come to you later than March. Can we work on the date?
And that all of those, all of the committee's CIPs have to be approved by this board before they can be forwarded to Trudy? Keep that in mind. Okay. Moving on to committee reports. Miles Kimberly?
Miles Kimberly. Well, in my defense, I think we, the Miles Kimberly Committee has been working very hard the past couple of years trying to prioritize the different projects, even though they're costly, and to decide which ones we think are most important. And recently, we had a meeting yesterday, we spent more time on that, the three of us, Steve and Cam and myself, on trying to prioritize these projects. And we just, we fall short of really getting down to finalizing and fine tuning what we need to do, especially prioritizing the projects and also placement of the different projects in the park so they don't cause problems with other things going on. And we can get to that later. Steve's done a nice job in requesting a proposal to be developed and you'll see that on page nine from Gosling Zubek to help us redo our master plan, our conceptualized master plan. The last plan I was aware of was in 2016 and that was not correct. That plan was marked up in 2020, I believe, to fit in with the 2024 Community Master Plan for Parks and Rec. But I'm going to ask, Steve, do you want to talk about this proposal?
Yeah, Kevin's here and we've been chatting a bit. I was directed to go out and by this group and get three quotes with regard to updating the master plan sheet mapped for Miles, which I did. They were all under 5,000. And Kevin put together actually a written response to that. And being that his was more detailed and fit in the general category of less than five, we decided to recommend to this group that we move forward with the proposal from Gosling. And maybe Kevin, you can step up and pull up a chair and speak into the microphone and identify yourself and give us kind of a scoop.
Yeah. So Steve mentioned, my name is Kevin Krobalecki. I'm a landscape architect with Gosling Zubek Engineering. Not sure how long I'll be in this position. I did take the place for Klaus Heinrich. He was a real estate architect at the office. So I am now in this position and we are landscape architect efforts, such as this conceptual master plan update here. So I think what you mentioned was correct. What we have and what we had put together for the five year Parks and Rec Plan was a markup of the hand drawn plan is, I guess you said, 2016 or so. Looks a lot better. So that's where that master plan graphic stands at this point. We have that file, basically that image and everything that was put into the Parks and Recreation Plan. But to do a realistic update, it would be a recreation of that graphic, basically our scale, master plan layout, re-rendered, and also include some interaction with the Miles Kimberly group to resituate some of those program elements that either stay or they'll stay in the park right now. Develop that all the way to scale and put something together that I guess we have for the future.
So the Scopier Plan involves initially a site visit to the Miles Kimberly to look over the whole structure and map and look at this plan that we had the markup plan and see what we want to add, subtract, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
You'll help us with that.
Yeah, I would suggest that. I think it's been long enough now.
We're trying to do as much work as we can ahead of time, but it's problematic and it's difficult a little bit for us.
Sure.
So we really need your help, I think.
Yeah, and I think we should do all of it together. Even if we have a start date here, beginning of April, hopefully, there might be a little snow off.
Pending no snow on the ground.
Well, we should have done it too, this year.
I want you to see the place, not with snow on it.
Right, yeah. And so that's the process there. And I think, you know, this is part of input, as you mentioned, and you can separate any of this smaller projects from the structural engineering and approach and suggestions I'm not going to be able to give you too. So I'd say a lot of this is a graphic book in the center. We can easily discuss what you want to place to scale and get it out there for the people on site.
Seems like every time we want to put something into the park, some conflict comes up about a neighbor or across the road or across the path. I think it's problematic and you can help us with that, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it as many people on the commission want to come to this meeting at the park as possible, is this fine with you? More the merrier.
As we can in front, go back, take a look and then just do a couple conditions, options.
And then after the site visit at another date, another time, there's going to be a meeting like in this room, let's say. And you would recommend the whole commission for that or just our committee?
I would say the committee here, are you talking about the county commission?
No, no.
No, no, you're talking about this group here.
Committee is just four of us.
We're a committee of three.
Subcommittee.
Yeah.
I think they're more the merrier because I think there's a lot of input.
Yeah.
Charlie's going to tell you, we can't spend any money here. We got to get around him.
Well, the nice thing about having an updated plan is, you know, graphic wood is itself one of the plans for pretty much all recreation opportunities that are out there. And people that will suddenly not be able to say a small portion of a project as a code or something like that, see if they can do the process that's there.
And then I just want to point out to the group that there's no public input into this process, the scope of this work. There's not going to be group meetings or anything like that. But we plan on posting an email out or we'll put a scan up at the park, having people, letting them know there's going to be a meeting when that is. And they can come and have public comment at the meeting too. That's appropriate for you, right?
Yes.
Okay.
John? I like this proposal. I'm John Popa. And I can't hear everything you're talking about, but that one paragraph, the third one down, would have to be changed because I'm not sure why you want to have a closed session. We have to be open and I think you touched on it a little bit or whatever. If we made a motion to approve this per this letter, we'd have to exclude that our meetings are all open. Unless it comes time for some special contract or whatever, which I don't see coming on this one. But I'm in agreement with this. This proposal dated February 27.
I think, I think the reference was to no public input from the, yeah. It's just a closed session for the committee to discuss. People can hear, but they can't.
That's not excluding public.
It's not, yeah, it's the wrong terminology in our world.
Anyway, it can't be a closed session, which is our word, doors are closed.
That's a legal technical term.
It's scary.
We'll be accepting public comment as per normal meeting procedures. Would probably be a good.
Would you agree to when I ask?
Different statement. So if you wanted to rewrite that.
And we don't expect a lot of people to come.
I don't know if you asked to rewrite it, we can just do that in our motion, say we'll accept this letter for February 27th with the exclusion that the meetings must be open.
I think it needs to be cleaned up.
We're not accepting anything at this point as a recommending by the board.
To the board.
Thank you.
There is a draft motion?
I didn't see that.
Because I'm going to be saying that's okay.
No, I didn't get that. Can you just read it? Oh, I see, yeah.
He's got it, he's looking at it.
I can make that motion with a comma at the end, except all our meetings will be open and not closed.
Make it.
So moved.
We had state and pending council review and approval. That pretty much opens it up to the council, who gave its blessing or whatever it went out.
We'll correct it at that point, you mean, yeah.
Pending council review.
So it doesn't have to be rewritten?
I would also like.
They'll rewrite it.
They'll make an agreement if the board approves this at the meeting.
I would also like after that proposal by Gosling Zubek, letter dated February 27th, 2023. I like to see references to a proposal.
Me.
Oh, yeah. Steve, I got it.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Is there any further discussion? Steve, yourself? Anybody?
John's last comment was in reference to what? He just wanted the date in there.
Where it says proposal from Gosling Zubek Engineering Services dated February 27th, 2023.
Okay. Got it.
So it's motion that the county parks, I recommend that the county Parks and Recreation Commission approve or recommend to the county board of commissioners approval of the proposal for Gosling Zubek?
Correct.
Okay. Engineering Services Incorporated to prepare a conceptual master plan of Miles Kimberly Park as presented pending council review and approval. So you're recommending to the county?
Yes.
Yeah, I want that in there. I always like proposals dated in minutes.
I'll work on that.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Second item on Miles Kimberly is the Barn Committee. Steve, want to take over? The Support Barn Barn Committee.
We have a new name for the group.
Yeah. Barn Use Committee.
Barn Use Committee.
Barn, Barn Use Committee.
You told me that yesterday, I have a short term memory loss.
I'm Steve Sider. I live in Empire Township. I'm representing the Leland County for Sport for the Basin Society and also the Barn Use Committee. We have a lease. The Leland County for Sport for the Basin Society has a 25 year lease on approximately two acres surrounding the barn and farm. And we're just starting into our second two year period. But I want to talk a little bit about the lease, the wording in the lease. Section 1 dash D says a six person commission, committee will be created to determine the specific uses of the barn and any related activities. Membership of this committee will be comprised of the chair, personnel with the county parks and recreation commission, two members of the Miles Kimberly Park Subcommittee President and two members of the board of Leland County for Sport for the Basin Society. Further, the lease says in heading intent, A, it is the express intent of the parties that the lease or is hereby leasing. Two, the leasing will constitute something to this lease and leasing shall revoke rehabilitate and maintain all historic structures found on the premises and shall collaborate with the parks and recreation to ensure the same are incorporated into the Leland County park system. So that's, that's the reason that I'm here. And the Barn Use Committee has met on February 16th and made the following request to the Miles Kimberly Park Committee on February 29th, 23. And that, that committee, Miles Kimberly Park Committee approved this request. And so you want me to just read this on behalf of the Miles Kimberly Committee?
And approve the document, please.
Yeah.
Miles Kimberly Park Committee requests that the Leland County Parks and Recreation Commission forward a request to the county board of commissioners that they consummate our collaborative partnership as required in the lease by a commitment to funding the Barn Use Committee as equal financial partners going forward.
Does that mean we split the cost of everything moving forward?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
It's a difficult one.
It's on a 25 year lease, 25 year lease, but it belongs to the county.
I have to have a discussion with the board in the touch of council.
Yeah. I mean, I understand how it's worded in here, but. I would be interested to see what they have to say. Because it, I mean, obviously it wouldn't be able to, small projects can be split out of our budget by approval, but large projects would crush our budget with, before we even start. So it's.
Well, we've done a fairly good job of having grants to work on the barn and continue to do that on behalf of this commission.
Right.
Can you estimate how much money you've spent on renovating the barn so far?
So far?
Yeah, just a whole barn.
Well, we've gone way beyond just rehabilitation to make it structure sound. We've reconstructed a kookaburra that was originally on the barn and a bean tree on the west wall is all finished now except for the concrete slab. That was originally on there and we painted it one. So all of those things together plus the structural rehabilitation, we've got about the $85,000.
Hi. Before I would approve that motion myself, I would like to hear from corporate counsel and the administrator and kind of get this, get some of the gray area cleared up and where we stand. I'm not, not in, not in support of the project or the collaboration. It's just making sure where our obligations stand and how it would be functioned out of, out of our budget or where the money would actually come from if that was to be the case.
And everybody understands that this is going to be a long process.
Yeah.
Like everybody else has agreed all the way through that the best use for people of the county is to have the barn be open to the public. And what that means eventually, what the specific use is, is going to be determined by this joint Barn, Barn Use Committee. And so it'll be their responsibility to determine what happens from there forward.
Steve, too, isn't, once you hear from the architect, won't we have a little more, more information probably and some better ideas, the scope, so, yeah.
Our group has gone ahead and hired an architect because you and I, after one of the meetings, you and I went up to the building safety department and asked Amber about what's involved.
Right, what?
She said, hire an architect and get this drawings and specifications together to read, to apply for building permit. Well, that's what we hired an architect to do. And so I can't tell you how long it's going to take, but we've been working at it and I expect it to be maybe another month or six weeks before we know it. And then we'll have a decent idea, but then, then we're going on and getting this and some bids on doing different things.
Right.
Just want to point out that the barn, the forebarn is, is part of Miles Kimberly Park. It's on a 25 year lease, but it's still part of the park. It's in the park, it's a section of the park. It's no different from the area that's, the 4H Club is leased 25, I have a 30 year lease on another section of the park, which is adjacent to the barn, the equestrian area. So it's, it's part of our park. So we should have some obligation to, you know, be responsible to it.
And our organization has, right from the beginning, been determined to make that an asset to the park.
And you have, I mean, it's beautiful now. Taken, I mean, so far it's been great, but we just need to have. Taken, I mean, so far it's been great, but we just need to have a better idea of what things are gonna cost and what, what, how, how it all would be structured before we make an approval, I think. Go ahead.
I agree with you. A couple of things caught my ear. One, you said this is gonna be ongoing. It's not gonna just be a one-time thing. And yes, it is part of Miles Kimmerly. Should we be thinking and present to the commissioners, we might just need, you know how we got Veronica Valley, we got this one, we got that. We may need another committee report for the barn. And that should be, and I think we should let the commissioners know, it should be a separate budget item. That's gonna be ongoing so that we just don't, we got parks and recreation. This is a big bill that the county commissioners agreed to jump in on a couple of years ago when they say, are we for this? Are we gonna tear it down? And remember, they said, no, let's start funding it. But they did, but I don't think it should come out of Miles Kimmerly. I think we should either next year when we prepare the budget, this is me thinking, that we should have a separate line item here and just what is this barn gonna take this year? Yes or no? Well, we can't have a sidewalk here because the barn's gonna use it up. But we've got all these expense items and it just needs to be what's gonna go on with the barn this year. And can bring it in front of our Parks and Rec Commission. But it should be, if he likes to come to every one of our meetings, it should be, this is what's going on and that's what's going on. But the commissioners need to just have a line item for the barn. This year it might be a lot, next year it might not be. But to try squiggling out of, we got 55,000, well, that's not near enough.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be enough to fund any substantial project on the barn and do anything with our parks, it's gonna be the-
Correct, that's why we should be talking, say, when it comes time for the June thing, is we need a separate line item of, of something to take care of this barn. That doesn't involve all this other stuff and the grandos plans, you know, how we got our big plans that Goslin Zubek, it doesn't include the barn.
Right. It's true.
So I agree with you that it's a big budget item, but I think we should start thinking about putting it on as a-
As an actual line item.
As a extra item for the commissioners.
Steve?
Yeah, I think that fits with exactly what we've been doing. We've got our budget, you know, we sat down, we put the different items in for the different parks that-
Right.
We wanted capital outlay for. And in the other category was the paved loop trail at Miles Kimmerly. And we asked for 190,000, which wouldn't cover the cost of the whole trail, but we figured it was a start. But we did not get that. Anyway, the barn, uh, Barn Use Committee request could, you know, fit right in there.
Right.
You know? And they either up or down, you know? It kind of seems like that's where it would be, although unless there's a special category of obligation that has been given.
See, and that wasn't my understanding when we entered into this contract, that the, the, I mean, I, through, reading through it and the way you have it stated, the, the money obligation, I, I don't remember that being discussed, but it is in the contract. I don't. Obviously that was with Chet, but I don't think we ever, I, I don't think, that, that may be the tough sell because I don't know if there was ever the intention that the county would fund part of this project. Cause I think it was more in their mind to get it off of the, I, I, this is just, I mean, it's been a while since I, we've, we've had those meetings and talked about this, but, um, it is there. So-
Well, we can ask, how you fill out these forms that Laurel has, we can ask for non-budgeted money this year if they want to move forward with that. They got a general fund and if this is that important and it needs to move forward, we just have to say, we have a proposed contract, but we're gonna look for non-budgeted funds and to put it in account, blah, 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 such and such.
Right.
And as a line item and draw it up or something.
It's possible.
I'm done, you're back?
Well, maybe, we'll see. I mean, it depends, it also depends on what the architect comes up with.
Totally.
And where, what kind of projects we need to focus on and what, what's prioritized and all that. So there's some homework to be done yet before we can have a request.
I'm not afraid to go for non-budgeted funds.
I'm not either.
We do it once in a while.
Been hitting the face more than once.
So, so Steve, can you be in communication with the architect to tell, pretty much, you know, give this timeline?
In the last few days, he's asking for things.
Okay, okay. But if that is a, you know, a time to get on the budget for next year, you know, it'd be nice, we had a little more input, right?
Yeah.
And so that, if, if it's possible, that would be great.
I, I expect it to be, I don't think it'll be any sooner than two weeks or longer than six weeks.
Okay. Okay, firm it up and, sounds great.
Okay.
I think it's nice we're focusing on the barn, I like that, but, but I think all the parks, Veronica Valley, Old Settlers, Miles Kimmerly, especially, we have projects, we have viable projects, good projects. We think that would enhance the quality of the parks. People in this county like the parks. And I think we have to plead our case to the board of commissioners and let them know how we feel about how they're treating the parks as opposed to how we think they, we should be treated. I think $55,000 annually to maintain and upgrade the parks, the three parks we have, is just pitiful. I really do. And I think, I don't know how we do it, whether the executive committee goes before the board of commissioners and talks with them and lets them know how we feel, we should do that, I'd be happy to do that, I don't know how we do it. But I think we should do that and include the barn along with that. But I think all the parks should be involved in complaining about what the amount of money we get annually to maintain the parks.
Well, being a newbie to this all, guys, but I'm willing to, during our next meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, bring up the idea that this board is really, this committee is very seriously looking at a way to fund better our parks for the whole residents of the county. So maybe I'll talk to Melinda before I do that, maybe, yeah, do it together, but I'd be happy to, yeah. I feel very strongly about this and I'm, I'm sure the commissioners do too, so we just need to make it so they agree. I don't know how to do it though.
So is it all right if we table that motion from the?
Well, if you, if it is stated, that's a just motion.
Okay.
You have a weight one.
Okay.
So there is no motion.
All right. I mean, is it right to think that we should weigh down that motion?
I, I think so, yeah.
Cause you already have, have on those in council.
Right. Good. Are there any other questions for Steve?
You will be back.
Any other? Get ahold of me for next month's meeting if we, you know, whatever, however we gotta do this.
Okay, mission three is next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
The 14th. Or two weeks out.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for your attention, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
I don't want to digress too far. Chris, you were looking at the document, do you know what makes up the 55,000 that we budgeted?
Um, yeah, we've got, Miles has got, um, park plan design, 7,500, standalone kiosk, 5,000. Old Settlers Park, replacement of dock sections, 10,000. Sideline parking improvements, 10,000. Veronica Valley Park, portable toilets with enclosure includes ADA access, 15,000. Prairie restoration, 2,000, wildlife viewing platform, 5,000.
I don't know if we ever got a copy of that document.
Yeah.
If ever.
Wasn't that part of the executive meeting?
Yes.
That's, we submit that, yeah. It's something that I-
We visited that at the barns.
Yeah.
So is that, is that on, um, it's in, is it in the minutes? Probably is.
It's in the minutes, cause I, it's a handwritten copy that I turned in and I didn't-
I know it was part of the minutes that were up here.
Right.
So I can just send everybody a copy of those minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just have a copy ready for the next meeting, cause I can't print it home.
And Charlie, some of those projects are somewhat fluid. I mean, we, when we go, when I, when I make the budget and we go, I have to justify the money that we're asking for. So we line up the projects that are, been talked about, looking at in the future. Some get done, some get, don't get done because you only have a year to, to do it. So it's, it is some, that capital outlay is somewhat fluid. And it goes by our approval as a board.
I'm not sure what, what import you're putting on the CIP information when you're preparing that budget.
That's a different budget.
It, the CIP, since I've been chairman, is actually, to me is a separate document and it's kind of a wish list document. I mean, cause those are all the big projects that we know that are not going to fit, most likely not going to fit in our 55,000 capital outlay. So we put them in the CIP so that if there is extra funding that comes available from the board or the board, the board, you go to the board to ask for a $300,000 project and is it in the CIP? So that-
Well, actually there, see, there's actually a hierarchy between the master plan, the CIP and the budget. Master plan is talking about the vision for the future and it may actually indicate improvements that you want to do in the park. You then put those items into the CIP where they're, with, with dollar amounts to say, these are what we need to do to implement the master plan. Then the budget should look at the master plan and its cash flow and say, can we do these projects and ask for that amount of money from the board for what we need to, to meet our, what we want to do from the CIP? That's the hierarchy.
I mean, I, I totally understand that, but that, that's not the way that it's ever functioned since I've worked here because we can't get a functioning budget to do any of those, if that makes sense. I, I'm not saying it's not a functioning budget, it is a functioning budget, but all of these large projects that come before us are requested by the public and they, we know that we're not going to get a budget, even a one-year budget fund for, to fund a $400,000 loop trail or any of those things, so it's been-
230, 230.
Well, what, I mean, what I'm, I'm just trying to get at the, it's, it's, I, I totally understand what you're saying and that is the way that it, that it works, but works a little differently for us because we don't have control over all of them. Is that, yes, so-
But we do have control of how much we ask for, from the board.
Yes, and we, we have asked for lots more money than what we get in the budget.
So what, your request in June had that 190,000, which wasn't.
Right.
So at that point, we have to say, okay, that wasn't approved for next year, cash flow that money forward or cancel the project entirely.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I understand.
That means we can't move things forward.
Right.
Well, you can in the next CIP.
The CIP is different when it comes to the budget or general fund budget, so whatever we have, if, if there's any extra, it just goes back into the general fund. You don't see a credit from the previous year.
They take it back from us. I don't want to say they take it back, but it, and it's for, the same for every department, I mean.
Yeah, I know.
But it, it doesn't, we don't get, there's, there's nothing pushed forward.
I mean, my, in my work history, I have, I always had two budgets. I had an operating and maintenance budget and I had a capital budget.
Sure.
And, and both budgets were approved separately by the board.
Well, whatever. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's not as, it's not as, it's not very, we don't function that way, I guess, if that's between-
Steve? You know, well, you know, so I was kind of, um, saying that the $190,000 ask, um, this last year for the, the loop trail, we knew that, uh, that's probably not gonna do the whole thing. But we felt it was, you know, enough money to get a good start on it. Uh, in my mind, we softened the ground a bit by the ask. I think, you know, we've kind of tossed this around a bit yesterday in committee form. In my mind, I'm thinking that the next, next ask would probably be 190 again, although it would, uh, ideally be a little more affirmed up with what do we get for 190? Um, one thing we run into, uh, when we're thinking and wishing and gonna ask the board for a big bunch of money, the other end of the equation is who is going to be doing the work?
Right.
And if I'm gonna ask a person to come out and say, okay, we got this project in mind and they put numbers together. So they met me on site, they put numbers together, they, they might have six hours into it or eight hours into it. And it goes nowhere. And the next year, I'm gonna say, well, can you come out and talk about this thing or that thing? And are they gonna wanna come out? Kind of less and less and less. So, um, chicken or egg, horse in front of the cart, I don't know exactly how we get to that next step for the 190, but we need to say, okay, we're asking for 190 again. We're not getting the whole loop, but it's gonna be this much of the loop prep and this much asphalt, approximately. So, you know, you go back to the well and say, okay, you know, we didn't get it last year, but we really want it this year. And this is what, this is what we're gonna get for it.
The key thing is the budget, not the CIP necessarily, but the budget.
Correct, correct.
We need to get the board to say, yes, you can spend $190,000 on loop trail.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Having it, having it in the CIP, uh, gives the board the opportunity to say, oh yeah, that was in the CIP, I knew this was coming.
Right, and the board, the board approves the CIP.
I knew this was, I knew this ask was coming and here's the ask. So that's all we can do is ask and, um-
The other thing I don't know, and I'm just gonna bring it up quickly, is do we have a grant writer in the county that?
We have an official grant writer, you know, Trudy does a lot of grants.
Okay.
One thing we-
The other question is for these large projects we've got here, should we be employing, finding a grant writer?
Yes.
Who can help us get money to fund these things? Would be nice.
Steve, yeah, yesterday, um, we had, uh, two people from the Glen Arbor-
City park.
Township. Cause that's a township, not a city or a village. They're not incorporated. So it's a, it's a township people, but it's the Parks and Rec Glen Arbor Township. They just put together a really nice park, they dropped a million dollars or whatever it was on that park project or whatever it was, got, got the grant, grants for it and they just went for a, what is it, Camel?
Spark.
Spark grant and that, there's, that's gonna come again. And it's a relatively straightforward process.
No match.
They have been in the game of hiring a grant writer. And I quizzed him a bit, well, are there a lot of grant writers around? And, and the answer was yes. And we got our grant writer, he said, from Ann Arbor. So they hired a grant writing group from Ann Arbor to come up and work with them and write a grant. Do you remember what it cost?
No, but he did say it was much.
A thousand?
Couple thousand.
Couple thousand. So anyway, the concept of a grant writer and us maybe spending some money for a grant writer is a concept. Maybe Dev Allen, new administrator, would have a, a take on that. I know Trudy does a lot of grant writing, um, she's, she's brought millions in for us, just, I can't believe all she's done.
Actually, I was gonna go to Trudy and ask her what she thinks about getting, the county getting a grant writer.
There might be a, it might be such a thing as the county, um, would prioritize a grant writer. We're not the only group that could really benefit from some grant writing.
Right.
There's probably other groups in the building that could really benefit from some grant writing.
Share from his vote?
Totally.
So anyway, um, maybe it's in our future to get some help.
Definitely.
Yeah.
It's been talked about, it's been talked about since I was a commissioner, but that's not- Okay, anything else under Miles?
No, we're done.
Old Settlers?
Uh, okay, we did, we did meet last week, I think. And we kind of prioritized what the projects needed for my, for Old Settlers. Refurbishment of the gazebo is the top priority item. So we started trying to flesh out what that, what that includes. Scott did a survey of the gazebo and we have identified that the roof is really getting to be in really bad shape. His recommendation was to essentially that we replace the roof. It's a, I have no experience with cedar shake roofs, so I don't know if you can just replace some- no experience with cedar shake roofs, so I don't know if you can just replace some of the boards without replacing the whole roof. So if anybody has experience with that, you might be able to guide me, but that was one. Then essentially, the new grub shack has vinyl siding. The church has vinyl siding. So we talked about using vinyl cladding around the structural members of the gazebo rather than just paint over the wood. Talked about using that trekked wood for the new stairs because those are pretty beat up. The decking needs to be refinished. Don't know that it has to be replaced, but the main decking needs to be. Replace that wood lattice work with a vinyl lattice. So this really, when we talked about the whole scope, it, it took it out of the realm of just ordinary and customary maintenance and threw it into a capital improvement project, probably. And I, if I had to guess, we're talking 20 to 30,000 total for doing it all. So, again, that's my rough estimate. I don't know who I go to now to say, here's what we want to do. Tell me what you think it'll cost.
Well, I think it's okay to put it in capital improvement, but if you've got some items that you think you need fixing, like we did the playground and stuff, you need to have those little pieces of paper filled out by July of what you want to spend on that park this year. Yeah, put it in the capital improvement plan, but come up with the ones that you want to do. If you want to redo the shingles on the roof or replace the steps this year or what, those little line item budgets then get put into here.
And like Chris said, just.
So you got to come up with what you want to do for next calendar year.
Okay.
Or if you think there's some little $1,000 projects doing this year.
Frankly, a lot of what you're discussing with regard to this gazebo sounds like a farm repair maintenance because it's an existing structure.
Yeah. I mean, doing, doing, just repainting it and whatnot, the ordinary maintenance, but replacing the whole roof, all the cedar shakes, I don't know. Okay, I would need some guidance.
There's a, one of my neighbors does a ton of work with cedar siding. I don't know how much he's done with a cedar roof, but I'll ask him about how that would work.
Perfect. We've got.
And we spent all of it last year.
We, we determined that the replacement of dock sections that we thought would be proactively going in when we set the budget was, you know, maybe do a few at a time because they're getting ready. Scott informed us that they're very solid and good for a good number of years yet. So there's 10 grand right there.
And the other 10 grand you mentioned about doing the side parking areas, I don't know that we were ready to do that in 2023 either.
So, but that would be easy. I mean, that shovel ready. They come and dump gravel and spread it. I mean, we can do that.
You got to tell them where to put the gravel.
Correct. We can do that. So, so we've got, we've got some money there and we've already determined that $10,000 could go toward the gazebo. So Casey's going to get us a number on the roof, maybe, and we'll go from there.
I'll see what he says about it. I don't.
The other people are this Preserve Historic Sleeping Bear, you know, the people that do the Friends of Sleeping Bear dunes, they've got sheen, sheen.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of their structures. So I would check with them. I've, I've got a contact too, if you want.
The second priority item was the wave action has underverted the foundation of the bottom of the stairs where the dock attaches to it. So we're looking at what do we do to fix that without requiring getting eagle permits required. Chris brought that up. He said, no, you don't want to go there if it requires a permit.
Yeah, I'll meet with Scott and ideally we'll come up with a, a placement that would work. Most of the time that I tell folks to make a, a dock section, it might be only this way by this way, and it's gets set between the dock and the stair, and it's removed in the fall. So that can count as a dock section and you don't need an eagle permit for it. And you don't need soil erosion control permit for it. So it's a way to fix it up and have it functional. I'll talk to Scott and see if we can brainstorm something like that. If not, we're going to have to get into some permits.
And the third item was, and Scott's already taken action on this, he's gotten someone who's going to come in and power wash the side, the exterior of the chapel and the pit toilet.
Right.
Which really both needed.
Yeah, they're, they're both pretty nasty.
So that's our main projects for Old Settlers for this coming season.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Move on to Veronica Valley?
We haven't really addressed priorities for our future planning and for, for budget for 2024 yet, but we will be. We have recognized that in this year's budget, we have monies identified for improving our porta potty service at the park. In beginning, whole meeting ago, last month, we realized how many things, decisions rested on a decision about our parking lot. Because we, we've talked about improving the parking lot. Did you give them, each of them a copy of that? We're not prepared to make a recommendation yet to this full commission, but we are headed towards recommending that this be accepted as our, our general master plan.
Yeah, I don't think I have one of those. Thank you.
Because what we do with porta potties this year depends on really the long-term plan for the parking lot. Because of the link in, maintenance link, a lot of it in terms of plowing or, or even mowing, et cetera, what decisions we make about the porta potty really depend on where are we headed long-term on the parking lot design. We're not looking at doing this full plan immediately or as any sort of top, the full plan is any sort of top priority. But we're headed towards making this, given our discussions and our, our look at other drawings, other, much of which John Walters has provided to us. This provides the best safety arrangement we've come up with. Parking clearly identified here next to the ponds and no parking identified on the other side so that we're eliminating people walking. But right now they park all over the place. And we're kind of leaving it a confusing state in terms of how you walk across the parking lot to get over towards the pond. We're eliminating that kind of pedestrian traffic across traffic floor. But providing with this big lobe at the top, providing the turnaround for school buses. So we're not ready to present to this group a recommendation, but this is what we're headed towards. And it's part of our lining, it's part of the broad discussion of lining up our priorities for both 2024 and five-year master plan that comes up the next year. I don't have any update on the Bieber situation. I know that Scott, gosh, I forgot he was going to be on vacation because I've kind of left a few things thinking he would be here for both our committee meeting and this meeting today. But I know that Scott reported to me that he did tear apart some of the upper dam. And at that point, Scott had had another conversation with Don Clark. And Don was going to get in there. Scott said he saw truck tracks getting back in there. So I presume Don has been in there, but I don't have any update on his success. The dismantling of the, of the dam such as Scott did was done in conjunction, some with Don's direction. So that's the movement that I'm aware of, but I don't know of any, any result. The last committee meeting, which was after this full commission meeting in the month of February, Veronica Valley Committee did pass a recommendation that we were to make to this group, accepting a contract proposal from Seven Lake Services relative to having to do with managing our weeds in the pond. We're not, I'm not going to present that recommendation now because in discussion with Heather Hedinger, I'm not sure that we want to get it, we, we need that service, that we need to hire an outside company. She brought up the possibilities and supported the idea that we can spot treat, we being Scott, maybe one of us volunteering to row the boat, which I'll do. But Heather was in support of the idea that we can spot treat the ponds with a pelletized chemical. Scott is a licensed applicator. I think the last time I had any discussion with him about this, he's, somewhere in the past, he may have used some of the pellet material herbicide in the pond. I don't know if we have a history of that, if he has that history or not yet. But we've got some time. We'll have to work with, talk with Scott about this, but we've got some time to decide whether we want to get into a contract situation with Seven for a chemical spray or not. Heather Hedinger will be at our full commission meeting remotely relative to the fish stocking, fish day, the purchase of the fish for stocking the pond. I'm going to seek to have her attend briefly, I mean, a shorter part of it, the committee meeting to talk to us about this, this idea that we can manage the weeds ourselves without engaging in a contract with a professional company. So we're holding on that right now. I mean, that's the status of that, that work. And along with that, we'll continue our coordination with the Lake Leona Lake Association in terms of, of weed management.
Free scouting.
Pardon me?
Free scouting. They can identify our weeds for free.
The Lake Leona Lake Association, yeah. Part of that problem is the timing. We don't see many weeds until you get, the water's warm enough. And by then, you'd better have made up your mind about a contract because of the permit, the time it takes to get permits.
From eagle.
Yeah. And getting all this done with a deadline date set by the kids fishing day.
Right.
There's some problems in scheduling there. But I wanted to slow down because at one point, we were ready to, committee to recommend to this group, that we recommended the full board of commissioners, that they accept the Seven contract. I don't know that we want to do that yet. I'm going to try to get Heather involved in our next April meetings then to help us sort through that some. And that'll take some discussion with Scott. But that's all part of what we discussed today and the action that we'll be moving towards.
Anything else?
Trees have been ordered for, principally for replacing trees we've lost in the enclosed corrals. That'll be, Tom, Tom Adams has done so much of this work long-term, not just this year. But Tom has put together the list. I reviewed it with him. The trees that he's going to purchase, it's about 60. And Cam, I'm going to talk with you separately about if we can find, if we can get a volunteer crew so that we, so Tom's not planting 60 trees by himself or even two people planting 60 trees, get it broken up even more. Most of them will be in the enclosures. A small handful may be spread out with separate fencing. We have that fencing already on hand. But that's coming along sometime in May. I mean, so there's more to, to inform you on the group as we, as we move along.
They turned the bill into the county already.
What was it?
Not a whole lot. I forget exactly.
Yeah.
I don't know, a couple hundred bucks or something.
I don't remember what we spent in the past, but a couple hundred.
Something like that.
We saw a line item for $318. It was meant to Leona Conservation District for trees.
That's from a past year, you mean?
From the past couple of years.
Yeah, okay.
That could be, that could be the amount.
I think some of those included more trees, but it's somewhere in that ballpark, somewhere in that ballpark. I'm missing something. Ask me a question. I think I covered it.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions for Dave? Any public comment? Steve?
Yes, I'm sure you tabled the issue that I have until the next commission meeting.
This, this commission, pending some review from the administrator and corporate counsel on the contract and how things would be structured.
And then it'll be on the next commission.
Depending on if we can get a result or an answer.
Yeah.
Sometimes things don't work real fast with the government, Steve. Any other public comment? Any commissioner comments? Nothing from me. Motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, or we adjourn. You've got long curly hair, too. Yeah, you could, I've got one. Thought about that the other day. Zach Stan said he would move that. And I can get that and that is just something that I.
What do you got there?